Hi, everybody. My name is Adam Wright, and I'm delighted to welcome you here to this important school committee debate. Your presence here, it says a lot about your dedication to the educational system here in Westfield and the commitment, your commitment to the well-being and the future of our students. There's not much more important to our community than the education of students. And as we oftentimes feel out of touch in the national political realm, and maybe we think our vote doesn't mean too much, this election for school committee has a significant and immediate impact on our community and our children. I want to congratulate the candidates who have chosen to run for school committee, taking an active interest in the decision-making process that affects our students. And tonight's debate, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge. We have five candidates here tonight instead of six. But I think that either way, it's going to be a testament to the strength of our community and the importance that we collectively place on getting the best possible education for our children. We do ask that all participants and attendees adhere to the principles of civility and respect tonight. I know we're all passionate about a lot of these issues, but we want to make sure that we have a discussion that is positive. We're all united by a common goal, and that's the betterment of our school system. So with that in mind, I want to thank the City of Westfield Youth Commission for sponsoring this event, and specifically Diana McLean for shepherding this project through. Also, thanks to the Short Stop, the Nush family for hosting, and JPag Luca, and Pete Coles, and Ken Stamsky for helping us with the audio and the video tonight. And thanks to Joanne Papadometrio for being our timekeeper tonight. We have a number of dignitaries here that I'd like to just introduce, and if you could just wave, that would be great. At-large counselor Brett Bean is here tonight. Brett? Kathleen Hillman of the School Committee is here. Tim O'Connor of the School Committee is here. And Jane Mulligan, who's an Athanam trustee, is here. Thank you all for coming. The rules for the debate are pretty simple. We've got 12 students here who are going to ask the questions. Now, it's important to know that these questions were developed by the commission and not the individual students themselves. And in fact, these questions were randomly selected and assigned to each student. So they did not write the question, but they will be asking the question. Each candidate is going to have the opportunity to make a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. And because of the number of candidates, questions are going to be presented to three candidates or two candidates at a time. And that way, each candidate will have a chance to answer a question first twice. What we'll do is we'll start all the way on my left, and then the next set we'll go through and start with the second candidate. Ah, you ever hear that? These are the student questions. They're just not reading their own. Okay. Thank you, Diana. That's okay. Okay, if a candidate is singled out by name, if somebody mentions them, that candidate will have an opportunity to respond directly to the person who has mentioned them in a one-minute rebuttal, and then that will be the end of that discussion. We'll go back to the next candidate in line to answer the question. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the questions. With 15 seconds left, our timekeeper Joanne will hold up a card, and that will let people know they need to start wrapping it up. One more bit of housekeeping, please make sure your phones are off. And also, parents who are here to support their kids, asking questions, we know you're very proud of them, but as they're asking their question, if you would please not run up and take their picture and do all those sorts of things while they're asking questions, that will keep us moving along and will not have you embarrass your children. And if we get all this right, we should be out of here by Thursday sometime. So, all right, let's introduce our candidates from left to right. Jeffrey Goslin. Jeffrey, you can applaud. All right, there we go. Jeff Gunther. Pam is here in spirit tonight. Pam Katarski, she is ill. Gabriella Mehalishin, I got that right? All right. Bo Sullivan. And Michael Terrell. And with that, we are ready for our very first question, and this will be directed first to Jeff. And if, when you ask your question, if you would give your name, your grade, and...
Intro.
What?
Intro.
Oh, my apologies. Thank you. Two-minute opening statements for each candidate, and let's start with Jeff Goslin.
Thank you. And thank you, Diana and the Youth Commission, for hosting this debate. My name is Jeffrey Goslin, and I'm running for school committee. My great-grandparents, my grandparents, my parents, my entire family grew up here in Westfield. I go back a long time. I graduated in '86 from Westfield High School, went on to Holyoke Community College, American International College, because I wanted to be a teacher. And then I went on to graduate school at Springfield College. I landed my first teaching job in Springfield. I've taught in the Northampton schools, and I actually just recently retired after 20 years of teaching, so. But I've taken on a new adventure. I work in sales now at Six Flags New England. So I've always done different things outside my comfort zone, and I think that's, you know, a quality that I can bring to the school committee. Thank you.
Jeff?
Thanks. I want to echo appreciation for the Westfield Youth Commission for putting on this event and ensuring that our community is well-informed about what I believe to be one of the most important elections on the ballot this November. There are a few things I want you to know about myself. I'm a parent of a second-grade student at Highland Elementary School. I'm a former teacher, and I'm an education finance professional. I've spent my career ensuring that students all across the country have the opportunity to achieve an excellent educational opportunity. First, as a high school science teacher, I spent five years ensuring that I was incorporating high-quality innovative practices into my classroom to ensure that students left equipped high school with the skills and knowledge that they needed to be successful in the world. I then went back to grad school and studied teacher recruitment and retention. I spent five years surveying thousands of teachers to understand what brings them to their roles and what helps keep them in those roles. Then went and worked in school finance and operations, and worked with school boards across the country on budgeting, strategic planning, and student data analysis. And I now lead the financial planning and analysis team of a large national educational nonprofit that recruits, trains, and supports thousands of teachers and educational leaders across the country every year, including here in Western Massachusetts. I'm running because I want to push us to be the absolute best we can be for our students. I want to make sure that those on the front lines in our schools feel like they have the resources, support, and training necessary to deliver a high-quality education for our kids. I want to make sure that students feel safe, supported, and well-prepared for life after high school, and I want to make sure that we're holding ourselves to the highest possible standards for our kids each and every day. I'm running because I believe that our schools are not quite yet the best they can possibly be, and I believe that my skills, experience, and perspective would be a valuable addition to improving Westfield Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Thank you for putting this on tonight, students. I'm proud of you for being interested in this. My name is Gabriella Mehalishin. I am running for school committee because of my experience as a foster parent for the last 20 years. I have had students in high school for that entire time, mostly in Westfield, some outside placements, some special ed placements. I've seen a lot of IEPs. I've seen a lot of suspensions. I've seen students graduate. I've seen students get their GED. And I have concerns about our situation since COVID and how we're getting the students back on track. My background is math and computer science, and I was a computer programmer for 15 years. I am by nature a problem solver. I'm going to look at the situation, look at the possibilities, ask the right questions, define the problem, and then we can come up with solutions. I am not convinced that the standard solution is the best solution. Just because everyone else is doing it doesn't mean we need to in Westfield. So I am here because I believe we can do better. We can come together as a community and decide what's important to us. The students have a very huge potential, and in math, since that's my specialty, I don't see math being taught the way it can be taught to understanding. A lot of the students go through math, and they memorize steps. So I'm here because education matters.
Hello? Good evening. My name is Bo Sullivan. I am currently a member of the Westfield School Committee. I have been for the past five years, and the last two of those years, I have served as the vice chairman. Before I go any further, I would like to, I know Billy Oniski from Ward Six sneaked in the back door when we were talking, and also Bridget Matthews Kane from Ward Three is in attendance, too. I just want to make sure everybody gets their due. Born and raised in Westfield, I was born in Oma Hospital, Highland School, South Middle School, Westfield High, class of 1985. Went on to University of Hartford, where I met my wife, Chris, and she moved to Westfield after we graduated. Two kids, two girls, both of them went through the Westfield Public School System. Both went to private universities, graduated, and are doing very well for themselves now. So the Westfield Public School System does work. There are some things that need to be fixed. There are some things that we could do better, but the Westfield Public Schools works. If we put the work in, and you guys actually prove this by just being here, the parents' involvement helps the students get along, and that's a good thing. I would like to keep this involvement. There are big issues that come up in front of the school committee, and a lot of times, we take votes with nobody in the audience. I like to see this. I like to see people involved, opinions. We don't have to agree on everything, and hopefully we don't, because different opinions get better results. And I think that's why we're here tonight, is to hear our opinions, but also to talk to you. I'm extremely happy that the Youth Commission is here and in charge of this tonight, because that's why we're all here, is to make sure these guys get the education they deserve. So I would like to thank them for putting this together, coming up with the questions, I think. We'll see what they are. But I really, I really think this is great, that the youth are in charge of this. I do want to thank everybody else, Diana, for putting this together, too. Nabil and his crew here at Short Stop. It's important. It is a hugely important election. So remember, November 7.
Hi, folks. My name is Michael Terrell. I, too, am running for Westfield School Committee. Thanks so much, Diana McLean, and to the Youth Commission, for putting this together. Gratitude for that. It's extremely important that kids get involved in this, and it's, just as Mr. Sullivan said, extremely important that the parents support the kids and take part in their education. I always tell my kids, because they'll come and ask me political questions, and I always tell them, your local elections are the most important elections that you can possibly vote in, because that's where the rubber meets the road. That's where your local politicians, they're the people that you see, you know, at the tavern, they're the people that you see around town, they're the people that are in your schools that are, that are walking around touring and trying to, walking around the city and trying to help make things better. So if nothing else, and I'm not encouraging anybody not to vote for, for other offices, but particularly for, for young folks that are coming of age to vote, this is, this is the type of forum that, that you should be involved in. So thank you for that, and thank you for parents. Real quick, a quick introduction. I've met a lot of people, a lot of familiar faces, but for anybody that doesn't know me, my name is Mike Terrell. I'm a lifelong resident of Westfield, Mass., Westfield High, class of 1996, also a Highland School alum, a Westfield Middle School alum, and so on. Current member of the Westfield School Committee, a member of the Westfield Public Schools Technology Committee, the Westfield School Building Committee, the Westfield, the Westfield School Committee, technology subcommittee, and parking wreck and community preservation. So I've got a lot vested in this city, and I really want to see the city and our schools succeed. Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for questions, and I promise I won't forget your closing remarks. I promise. For the students, when you get up to the microphone, please say your name and what grade and what school you go to.
Good evening. My name's Susanna Hitchcock. I'm a senior at Westfield High, and my question is, what are the biggest challenges we have to overcome in education since the COVID-19 pandemic, and have there been any advantages or positives that have come from it? Thank you.
Start with Jeff.
Well, I'm going to take it in a little different direction, that question. I would say teacher retention is at the top of the list. You have to have resources. I come from the Northampton School District. You can't believe the resources I have in that district. If your teachers are worn out, burnt out, they're not going to last. And COVID played a role in that, so I guess my answer is, you know, attached to your question in that way. But you got to have resources. You got to have people come in from the outside into your classrooms, creating those programs. We have something called Whole Children that will come right into the classroom, a 45-minute period. The teacher can go and do some extra things and duties that they need to do, because they make a million phone calls a day and do all kinds of other things. And it gives that teacher a little bit of a break. So you have to have resources. And I think resources coming in with the COVID pandemic, that grant money is going to dry up soon. I know that. There's people employed under that grant money, and it's going to be gone soon. So that's how I'm going to answer that.
Jeff?
Thanks. Yeah, so I think you touched on a great one in terms of the upcoming challenges with regards to funding. We know that the federal COVID dollars are mostly expiring over this next year, and that's going to result in a funding cliff for our schools. And so I think it's going to be a hard couple of years in terms of budgeting. It's one of the reasons why I'm compelled to get involved as an education finance person. I think in the classroom, we saw a lot of student learning loss from the pandemic. The rapid transition to virtual instruction was a challenge within Westfield and across the country. We also see students with higher absences. In many cases, if they're getting ill from COVID, and we know how much student attendance is important for student achievement. And then, as Jeff started alluding to, I think teacher attrition is the other big one. Teachers are often feeling burnt out. They're being asked to cover preps for other teachers who are still dealing with illness, and oftentimes, or at times, needing to give up prep periods, which is impeding their ability to, you know, to do their job and feel like they're being valued. I think the conditions of teaching have changed since COVID. They certainly were different during COVID, but the rest of the system hasn't caught up in terms of how we think about the total compensation package for teachers accordingly. In terms of upside, I think we've learned some things. I think we've learned about what does and does not work with remote instruction. I think we've seen some opportunities with things like high-dose tutoring across the country, being able to help students recover some of those learning losses. And so I think that there are places to see bright spots where, across the country, we've seen where that influx of federal dollars has allowed people to learn and be able to achieve or overcome some of those challenges that I named.
Okay, time for our next question.
Hello, I'm Seth Barber with the Youth Commission. I'm a freshman at Westfield High School. My question is, how important do you think the arts are to public education, and how does that affect budgeting?
We'll start with Gabriella. You have two minutes.
Okay. I do believe the arts are important. It keeps the students inspired. Creativity is very useful later in life, not just as high schoolers. And art and music give the students the ability to be creative and really even work together on projects. As far as funding goes, that needs to be prioritized, and I would keep that as a priority.
Okay, Bo?
The arts, I think, are hugely important. I think this is a great question. When you say arts, the way I look at that is, everything involved with that. It's not just sitting down in an art room and creating something. It's not just painting. It's not just clay. It's, it's everything. I consider it to be music, drama, sometimes technology, dance. They're all part of the arts, and you never know what kid or kids are going to latch on to one part of the arts. If it's offered, somebody may blossom. I see it every day. I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club here in town, and we had to expand our art room by four times, because it is the most, well, with dance, but it is the most popular program in the building. They like to take pictures. It's photography. It's drawing, all sorts of drawing, not just pencil and paint, but anything they can think of. I think it is such a creative issue and vehicle for students nowadays that they can expand on that. It's, it's not just math and English and social studies, science, all things that absolutely have to be done. But the arts are where, like Abby said, where the kids get their creativity. It may be any one of the ones I just mentioned. You never know. They may just walk by an art room and say, huh, I never knew they did that, and walk in and pick it up and be the best one in the school, be the best one at the club, whatever it is. So I think the arts is hugely important, and we have taken the extra step to keep the arts in. There was one time where, again, the arts, I do music, there was such budget cuts that we were talking about elementary band. That wasn't going to fly with the people on the school committee. So I think it's a great question, and I think it's one thing that we can push forward.
Mike?
Yeah. So in terms of the arts, same thing, arts between art, music, drama, everything. I myself was a musician as a, as a student from elementary school all the way through high school, as were my two older kids participating in the band. And I will say, there's, there's really something to be said for being a well-rounded student. Not that there are not, not that people that are not part of the arts are not well-rounded students, but there is something to be said for having a creative outlet for children to, to be able to gravitate toward. The, I mean, there are some, there are some folks that, some children that come in, some students that come into school, and the only, that's the only outlet they have. That's that, you know, they come to school, that's, for some people, that keeps them in school, their participation in band, chorus, art classes, and so on and so forth. There, there is talk, every so often, every few years, it seems like, maybe it's every seven or every 10, about around budget time, about cuts being made there. I would never be in support of cutting band, chorus, the arts of any kind at all. I think it's extremely important for that segment of students. And generally speaking, the folks that I hung out with when I was in, when I was in band, and the, and the people that were also in chorus, and some of these other art areas, were just really good kids, too. Like, they, these kids hung out with each other. They were not in trouble. They spent their spare time playing music, writing music in the band room. That's where study, a lot of studies were spent. So extremely important for, for those programs to be available to our students. Thank you.
Time for our next question.
Hello, my name is Jules Kubick, and I am a sophomore at the Westfield Technical Academy. The question is, not all school systems require students to participate in the science and engineering fair. Why is it a requirement in Westfield?
Jeff Gunther, two minutes.
Yeah, I love that question. As a former high school science teacher, I feel very strongly about the importance of science and engineering. And I, and I do think that, you know, in terms of, you know, what I would like to see for our schools is an even further investment in science, technology, and engineering and math curriculum. And the reason for that is, I think that not only are the, the baseline knowledge so important, you know, science permeates our world, whether you like it or not, it impacts, it's a, it's a key part of politics. It informs the arts. It informs the humanities. I just am part of being a well-rounded person. I also think, though, that science and engineering lends itself to a way of thinking that I think is really important for all students to have exposure to. So the way of thinking that is, you know, understanding the scientific method, I think is really important. I think understanding computational thinking and just understanding how to approach problem-solving in the way that a scientist or an engineer does is an important skill set for all students, regardless of where they end up being in life. So it's both because it's going to be important for you, it's going to give you exposure to it in your life, but it also helps you build ways of thinking that are, that are important. I also think that, you know, I do think, though, that there's ways to improve the ways that we teach science, right? So historically, science, a lot of the science field has been kind of rote memorization of things you can now look up, right? And that's not the way that I would like to see us focus on science and engineering. I would like to see more problem-based, applied learning. So as a high school science teacher, I was always trying to figure out, how can we get out in the field and connect this to things that students are interested in, rather than training them to memorize facts that they can then look up when, on their phones when they leave the classroom?
Gabriella?
Thank you. I totally agree. I am very much in favor of understanding, not memorization. I think that science and engineering is a unique subject, because you're using different parts of your brain. You have to think critically. You have to think things through. When I was in high school, I absolutely loved physics. I took AP Physics, and it was my favorite class ever. Most people wouldn't say that. But seeing math, being able to be used with physical things, and that combination, like playing with the numbers and using equations with, in real life, that was very useful. And I believe that the problem-solving skills that these students learn in the engineering and science can be used for problem-solving things at home when they grow up. And I mean, real problems, like I have to get my daughter to here and my son to here at the same time, and it takes this much, you know, you don't think that you're going to use math in real life, but you have, you have to solve problems. And getting the critical thinking skills into these students, the high school especially, that's the last time that we have with them in our school. And if, if they don't have problem-solving ability, they get into a lot of trouble. So that's why I think science is so important. And I used mine as a computer programmer quite a bit.
Next question, please.
Good evening, candidates. My name is Lonnie Ching, and I am a secretary of the Youth Commission. I am a sophomore at Westfield High School. The question is, why are students at a disadvantage when it comes to SAT preps, while other communities offer Saturday prep classes?
Bo, two minutes.
That's a good question. Why don't we offer it? We should. There should be courses for it. I know, again, I'll go through with my kids, because I was lucky enough not to have to take the SATs when I was in, was in high school. First of all, I'm not saying that I agree with it, and I'm not sure I agree with SAT should be a graduation requirement. Okay, I'll get that out of the way. I know there's talk about maybe not having that be a graduation requirement. I would be not having that be a graduation requirement. I would be in favor of that. I wasn't a big fan of this when it came out in the early 90s, but I would like Boston, quite honestly, to revisit that. But having said that, now that it is a requirement for graduation, we should be making sure that the students have their best possible way to take the test and be prepared for the test. Some kids aren't test takers. Gotta admit, I was one of them. But that doesn't mean you can't do well enough on the SATs to get where you need to be. I do wish that there were more classes. I know when my kids were going through, I started, when my kids were going through, I actually called up a teacher and offered to pay them to tutor my kids in the SATs. That shouldn't have to happen. They were doing a little side business, so I was happy to help support because I thought my kids needed it. I wish that if it has to be Saturday, maybe it could be something that's after school. Maybe it could be something, I know you guys go to school early, but some people like to get up early. Maybe it's something before school, too. I'm not saying you have to do that, because I can tell by your face you don't want to go any earlier than you do now. But, but there should be more. As long as it's a graduation requirement, and we just had the question about STEM and why some of those are requirements, why wouldn't a requirement be for something that you need to graduate? It makes perfect sense. So, having said that, is that my time? I'll work on it.
Mike, two minutes.
Perfect timing. So one of the issues with standardized tests, or one of the issues with testing in general is that, there's many, there's many issues with it. One of them is that, just a difference in the amount of access that different students have from different communities in terms of what type of tutoring, what time, what type of preparation they have. So you're outlining one, one really good reason against any standardized testing or standardized testing particularly as a requirement for graduation. That being said, there is, I don't know of any reason, any specific reason, why we do not offer that particular program here in Westfield. And to Bo's point, I will do the same through my work on the school committee to, to look into that and see, see what we can do about getting you guys some more preparation time. Thank you. Jeff?
When I was up at Westfield High School, we had something called pre-SAT that we took in our sophomore year of 10th grade, and that really helped, improves the scores. Almost, almost just about every student, if you look at the research, does improve with that, and their scores do go up. So I know it helped me. My score did go up, so that's maybe something we can revisit. I don't know if they still offer the pre-SAT or not in 10th grade.
Okay, time for our next question.
Good evening, candidates. My name is Tegan Chisholm-Gojak, and I am the chair of the Youth Commission. I'm a sophomore at Westfield High School, and the question is, will the National Junior Honor Society return to the middle school?
Gabriella, you're up first.
I don't know. But I will find out. It seems like it should. I think that as many, like, extracurricular type of activities and honors type of things that we can offer, if we can get our students in leadership positions, even in their own clubs, that is wonderful practice for the future. I know my students were, my, my boys were in gavel club, which is a Toastmasters for kids, and they learned so much because those are run as an actual business meeting. So you learned not only public speaking, but they had a president, the secretary, the treasurer, they had votes, they did motions. So they actually practiced business meeting type of things. And through that, now they have experience that when they get into a company and they have to participate, they have those things. So I think that as many of those options that we can give our students, the better.
Bo?
I absolutely agree with that. This is something in the middle school that these, these types of clubs are kids that are role models. They can be role models, they can be mentors, they can help other students, the younger students aspire to be a part of it, but if they're struggling, the members of the Junior Honor Society can help those struggling students get to where maybe they qualify for it. I've seen this work. We do it, again, in the, in the Boys and Girls Club, we have Keystone Club, which is the older kids in the club have basically what you're talking about. They do community projects, they help out other students, the younger students in the club with homework, and anything, the other activities that are going on, breakfast to veterans, things like that. They're the ones who run it, but they add in the next level and maybe even the next two levels of students. So I absolutely think it's, it's an achievement to make the National Junior Honor Society, obviously, when you get there. But more, I think more importantly, is how it radiates throughout the school, taking the other kids and being the mentors, being, being the role models. And those kids that qualify for that are role models. Not sure they know it, but they are, because the younger students in that school, and even in the elementary schools, look up to them. If it's a brother or a sister, or a friend of a brother or a sister, they know they're on National Junior Honor Society. It's like, wow, that's pretty cool. I get something. It's an award. I can aspire to be part of that club. So I absolutely think it should be, be brought back.
Okay, thank you very much. Time for our next question, please.
Good evening, candidates. My name is Jack Knappick. I am a sophomore in the aviation program at Technical Academy. My question is, the freshman students are unaware of all the rules and policies as what, and do not understand them as well as upperclassmen. Is there any way to more clearly define them or have an appeal process for first-time offenders?
Mike?
So we're talking about at the high school, or at the high schools?
Yeah.
Okay. And they're not familiar with just rules and regulations and and precedents at the school? Okay. You know, off the top of my head, the, so it's, it's difficult for kids to walk in from one school to another, right? And I think maybe more than any, going from middle school to, to high school is a very difficult transition, regardless of which, of which high school you're going to. I know we do, you know, a brief step-up period, step-up day for the folks that are entering the high schools. I think there's an exploratory program for the folks that are entering the Technical Academy. Perhaps there could be a greater focus on rules, regulations, and expectations as part of that program. Potentially, I mean, I know handbooks are distributed and so on, and I think there is a requirement that those handbooks be signed and returned, or it may be electronic now, I'm not, I'm not sure. So there is some reasonable expectation that that work has been done and that students are familiar with the rules and regulations. That said, if, if it's a feeling among the student population that it is just either there are certain topics that are not covered in the handbook, or there is just a, maybe a better forum, we could certainly work on that with administration and see what we can, what we can work out to try to communicate that a little bit more effectively. Thank you.
Jeff, two minutes.
I think this is an opportunity to be a little creative here. I know as a teacher, I have to take every year online, bloodborne pathogens, school rules, lockdowns. So maybe we could create that kind of a program for our students. They would like an online version of that with the policies. It doesn't have to be a long, drawn-out type of program. You can simplify it, and then they take like a quiz, they make every teacher do it for the online learning, every year, the same thing over. So I think the students would rather do something maybe online like that, that they could actually look at some of those policies.
Yeah, I agree, that middle school to high school transition is so challenging for students. It's an entirely new context, new social circle, new teachers, new administrators, new sets of rules. And I think that we need to be really intentional about that and recognize that while as a teacher, it is, you know, it is very reasonable, given all the things that they're trying to manage, to want to jump right into content on week one, day one, that we need to build in the opportunity and make sure the school is, has a system-wide approach to building in opportunities for explicit instruction of those sorts of, those sorts of rules, for developing collective norms within your class so that you aren't feeling like you're being caught off guard. I think that there's, you know, smaller approaches that you can take. There are like, you know, buddy system approaches and things I wish I knew, letters that you could pass down through homerooms and things like that, right? I think that you could make that if you're, if you're identifying that as a major, like, as a major area of need, that that is something that the administration could work with the school leaders to figure out how to target bringing the awareness of those rules and regulations to the, to the ninth graders as a part of a explicit onboarding period over those first couple of weeks of the year.
All right, terrific. Time for our next question.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Matthews. I'm an eighth grader at Westfield Middle School, and the question is, the Spanish department has been the most active with their upcoming trip after COVID. However, other programs such as the German and Denmark exchange trips have not had teachers driving for these experiences as they had had in the past. Would you be willing to encourage teachers to take more of an active role when it comes to international exchanges and programs?
Gabriella?
That does seem like a problem, doesn't it? So returning after COVID, not everybody came with, back with the same energy. And it's important to encourage the teachers and help, help them out. So I think that teachers need a little bit more support, and I know some of the students stress them out. But also, I think that if they were allowed more creativity in the classroom, as far as what they teach and how they teach, that would also be beneficial. Now, as far as the specific specifics that you talked about where the Spanish club is doing something and the other ones are not, you students have a ton of impact. You have, you have voices that can be heard and don't wait for the leadership to do everything. So I encourage you to make your, make those requests. And I do hear that request, and now that we've heard the request, we can actually get something implemented to try to change this situation. But I definitely would encourage, when you have issues, that you bring it to somebody, and we will try to get the communication opened up.
Bo?
I agree. I'm sitting here thinking about that answer, and Gabby took the words right out of my head. There's a word that keeps coming back to me, and you guys at this have provided some, but the word I keep thinking of is leadership. You guys can take this issue, if it's that important to you, you can take the bull by the horns and advocate for yourselves. We don't know that that's an issue. If we don't hear it from, from you guys, or a teacher, or an administrator, or a parent, we don't know. So some of the best leaders are the ones who ask the best questions or advocate for something that they want. And that would be, this is a perfect topic for that. I think if, if somebody came to somebody on the school committee or a candidate and brought it to our attention, we can go to the superintendent, or we can go to the high school principal, or the Tech Academy principal, and talk about that and see if there's any way to do it. Now, it's also a two-way street. One of the best ways to get this program going is we invite exchange students from those countries. We just had a special meeting where we needed to expand how many exchange students we could put at Westfield High School. We went from three to six because I believe she's from Germany and just started. She's gonna be able to tell you guys some great stories about how great Germany is, I'm assuming, and how she's learning so much here, but how much you could learn over there on an exchange program. If it's a field trip or a trip for a week, same thing. But I think this is a, a perfect opportunity to exert more leadership. Like I said, you guys just being here has shown it so far, but you could take this issue and run with it and make sure it happens.
Mike?
Yeah, same, along the same lines. Again, at the school committee level, just speaking from experience. So we're presented with these policies, we're presented with the limits, the, we have to approve the exchange students and the number every year. We don't necessarily approve not to have exchange students or not to send exchange students overseas. Obviously, things have been a little bit different since COVID. Is that me? Things have been a little bit different since COVID, and different departments and different faculty have been a little bit different to, to return. So I don't know if that has something to do with it. But I would agree with, with what the other two candidates said in that, as a commission, and I don't know what, what power you guys have specifically within your individual schools, but you also have school government that, that acts within, within your schools as well. And this is kind of a good, a good lesson in terms of how do we take things to, how do we take things to different bodies to be able to get something done? Because at, at our level, we're doing the same thing. If we have a problem with, with a park in town, we go to the Park and Rec Commission and we talk to them. If we have a problem with potholes or, or, you know, something in my, in my neighborhood, I might go to my ward counselor, but this is another, this is a good opportunity for you guys to kind of learn the way, the way all of that works. And if you want something to get done, what are the avenues to go about in order to do that? Like, like Bo said, like Mr. Sullivan said, now that we know about it, we can ask the question. But, and, and bringing it to us is a, is a good move as well. But there's other, but there's other avenues within, I think, within school by which you can, you can raise that. Thank you.
Our next question, please.
Good evening. My name is Lincoln Van Heunigan, and I'm a sophomore at Westfield High School. The question is, are there grants that are available the school department has not applied for?
Jeff?
Well, I think maybe Mike and Bo could answer the current grant position. It's hard coming in a little bit from the outside. I can tell you this, I've written a grant myself for this Northampton School Department. We didn't get the grant. But guess what happened? A year and a half later, they came up with the money and their budget, so it was for transportation for the after-school program. We wrote a grant, so write the grant, write the grant. I ruffled a lot of feathers, made a lot of phone calls, and got people talking in the community. That's what it takes to get a grant. So if you're looking to write a grant, write one. There's no stopping you. There are writing workshops you can take. You can contact Anna Boot and Cooper right up at Westfield State University or the Athenaeum, and they have writing workshops underway right now as we speak. They're free and open to the public, and high school students are welcome. So the other thing is, if you have paraprofessionals in your school district, you have a 95% chance of getting that if they write the grant. If you have a teacher write the grant, you have a less than 50%. I learned that through NEA when I went to a conference. So you gotta have more people involved across the span and spectrum. It's not just the teachers all the time. You gotta have more people in the community, and it can work and be effective.
Now, since you mentioned Bo and Mike, I will give them each a minute to respond to that, but first we'll hear from Jeff.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I, and the short answer is probably there are things out there that we're missing, but I do know that the, that the school district does a lot of work to bring in a lot of good grant money, having sat through many Having sat through many board meetings, school committee meetings recently, there's always the acceptance of some number of grants in pretty much every meeting. So I know that this is an area where there's a lot of work being done. That's not to say that we're getting everything that we possibly can. And I do think that one thing that we could be doing to help improve our ability to achieve grants is to have really clear needs assessments, to be able to have really clear, specific, measurable district goals that we're driving towards so that we're able to make a clear case to funders so that we can first identify what the specific areas of need are within the district and then to make a clear case to any funders about what we're going to be able to do with that grant and how it's going to advance district priorities in a really specific manner. And so I know that in the work that I do now, as I said, I work for an education nonprofit. We raise about $250 million a year, very familiar with the nonprofit, both private and public funding landscape. And I know that there's been a shift in that recently to spend, to give less gen ops dollars, just like general operating, here's some dollars because you're doing good things in the world, and more of a focus on really specific programmatic grants that are trying to achieve very specific and measurable ends. And so I think the role that the school committee can be playing is in helping the work with the administration to get really clear on what those areas of need are and what the specific objectives would be of the grants that they're being able to, what the specific goals are that they're able to work towards to make a more compelling case.
You don't have to take the minute, but if you'd like to, Bo, you could comment.
Sure, I will. Joanne Lemelin, who writes the grants but also administers the grants. And think about the budget and how many grants there are. And we have one with part-time helping her administer the grants. So first thing is staffing. I make my living off of grants and they're right. Is there some out there that we don't apply for? Probably. But they write a lot of grants. Jeff is right. We accept grants pretty much at every meeting. So one real quick example that I would use too, and Jeff alluded to it, was the specifics of a grant nowadays. Instead of just going and saying, hey, I need a million dollars and here's a million dollars, they want to know what you're going to spend it on and how you're going to spend it and how long it's going to take you to spend it. So there needs to be buy-in. If it's teachers, if it's pairs, if it's administration, they need to help Joanne write those exactly what they can do in the classroom to spend that money.
Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Sullivan covered it pretty thoroughly. But I would add that, yeah, often with them, there are stipulations in terms of when they can be used, when they have to be exhausted by things like that. So there does have to be collaboration. It's not just a matter of writing grant after grant after grant, right? There's a rhyme or reason to it. And I will agree that Joanne, at just about every meeting, not every meeting, but very often, we're accepting a grant and they're often in the six-digit or even more range. So we're very active in that front. Do we miss one here and there? I'm sure we do, but we're very active.
Okay, thank you very much. Next question, please.
Good evening. My name is Jillian Battles. I'm a junior at Westfield High School. The question is, are there any plans or do you think there should be plans to have phone pouches in the schools to lock cell phones away till the end of the school day?
Mr. Sullivan, two minutes.
This is a good question. There are arguments on both sides of this question with cell phones. Personally, I would like to see them locked away while you're in school. I know that's not going to be popular with you guys. But I just think they're too big of a distraction, okay? Like I said before in my opening, I had two girls go through Westfield High School. I know how many times they texted me during a day. I mean, it wasn't, Dad, can I get a ride home from softball or field hockey? It wasn't that. It's, hey, what are we doing this weekend? Or I can't believe she's going out after. Can I go with it? No, that stuff doesn't need to happen in school. So I know it's been worked out on a trial basis in other school systems. I know Chickaby did it and I think it's pretty successful. So this is one of those ones where I'm going to answer the question. Mom and dad may love it in my answer, okay? You guys may not, but that's okay. But I think right now, if it came before us, and just so you know, we haven't really talked about it. There hasn't been a full discussion of the committee on something like this. It has been kind of bitten at on the edges, if you know what I mean. But if it comes before the committee and just me, I know you can ask the other members who are here tonight, but I think I would vote for it, okay? I just, I'm looking at mom and dad. They're shaking their heads, okay? They are. I just think they're too big of a distraction. And you guys, you know, I always told my kids, you have a job now. Your job is to be a student. And I think while you're in that school for the five and a half, six, six and a half hours, whatever it is, we're students first.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, so speaking of grants, right? So a couple of meetings ago, we accepted a grant for, I think it was $25,000 to buy those yonder pouches for a trial of cell phones in the secondary schools. I don't know what the number of them were. It was said at the meeting. I just don't remember the number off the top of my head. But so the conversation is starting to be had in the district. I have to say that I agree with the fact that there are just too many distractions within the classrooms in order to not have that be the case. Now, obviously, if everybody just is courteous and doesn't abuse a cellphone policy without, in the absence of these pouches, then that would be great. Unfortunately, you're never going to have 100% buy-in without some fair but firm and consistent policy across both of the secondary schools. So I myself am in favor of cell phones being, cellphone access being limited. I do appreciate the fact that there's a safety aspect to it and parents like to be able to get a hold of their kids, things like that. I can't even imagine when I was in school, you know, my parents couldn't get a hold of me ever. They didn't know where I was. But not that I was anywhere. I wasn't supposed to be. But I know that is a kind of a security blanket where we want to be able to get a hold of our kids at any time. But we do have to keep the distractions to a minimum. I think it's a little bit too much to have full access to the cell phones in the classrooms. Thank you.
Mr. Goslin?
Okay, so I'm coming at this from a different angle because in the Northampton schools, they use them. They can use the cell phones. But we use them with a reason and a purpose and part of the lesson. One time, we were out on a nature hike trail and like, oh my God, how are we going to get out of the woods? We were all lost. Well, there's your cellphone. We were able to learn, it was a learning experience for an adult as well as the kids, to use the compass and to find our way back out through the wooded trail, back to the school building. So there's things you can use on a cellphone that are part of your lesson that do tie in with your science or different subject matter. We have off-in-a-way policy. It does work well, but each district is different. So you'd have to look at your local and see, is it working here in Westfield or is it not really working? Is it a distraction or is it not a distraction? Can it be used for a learning tool or instrument for a lesson? So I would look as school committee member at all those different angles. But I've seen more pro in my career than against it. So I'm more for it at the high school level, you know, able to have your cellphone.
All right, thank you very much. Time for our next question, please.
I apologize for the lack of proper attire. I came straight from work. But my name is Tom S. Knappick. I'm a junior at the Westfield Tech Academy. My question today is pretty broad, but why are you running for the school committee or continuing to run? And are there any initiatives you'd like to start?
Out there. Yeah, so as I said in the beginning, the thing that's really, the reason why I'm running is because I think that my combination of skill, experience, perspective would be a valuable addition to our school committee. I see how our, in my work, working for a national education nonprofit, get to see how schools all over the country, communities all over the country, are adapting to meet the needs of kids today, of the world they're going to graduate into, the labor market they're going to graduate into. And I think that that perspective would be a valuable addition. I think that ultimately, our schools are, I don't believe that our schools are the absolute best that they could ever be, right? There's room for improvement. That takes absolutely nothing away from all of the hard work that is done. That is not to say that our schools are bad or they like, that our schools are good. They're solid and they also could always improve. And what I want to be able to bring to the school committee is a new set of perspectives and experiences and also a sense of urgency that we need to address any problems that we have with our schools right now. So the question about SAT, I don't know how many of you see the New York Times. They just came out with data about how the correlation between socioeconomic status and SAT performance. We should be doing absolutely everything that we can as a school system to help address that, to help our students in Westfield overcome any of those barriers. And so I have a second grade daughter in the schools. I feel a lot of urgency to make sure that our schools are the best they can possibly be. In terms of initiatives, I think the portion of a grad work the superintendent is doing is super important and would love to be a part of that, to make sure that we have a clear vision of what we want to be true for all of our schools and that we are working constantly to work in service of that vision.
Gabriella?
I am running because of a similar reason. And I think that the academics and standards that we have had in the past, during COVID, we didn't have as much support as the students needed. And we're in a rebuilding phase, just like the entire country is. And I think that I have the problem-solving skills to be able to talk about that, to come up with the solutions and to encourage the learning that needs to be done. And I believe our students can catch up quickly if they're given the opportunity and challenged to. The, we often teach to the test. We have, our students have to pass MCAS. So there's a lot of focus on what's going to be on the test. We need to make sure that we cover that. But you have to understand that when you help people think critically, if you work on their analytical skills, the test scores go up, even if you're not focusing on, here's what we need to do. It's on MCAS, so we have to make sure we cover this. So I would love to see more teamwork in the schools because through that, multiple things happen. Students learn to work together. That's kind of obvious. That's what it is, teamwork. But students build relationships with people that they wouldn't normally be in. So they have to interact with people outside their clique and maybe form bonds and friendships that wouldn't be a typical type of friendship. So I would like to see that type of thing.
Thank you very much. Time for our next question.
Hello, my name is Finn Shizam-Gachak and I am co-treasurer of the Westfield Youth Commission. I am in eighth grade at Westfield Middle School. The question is, do you have any plans for programs involving high achievement students like college applications or SAT preps?
Mr. Terrell?
So the, in terms of, are you talking about in eighth grade in high school? Are you talking about specifically to your grade level or are you everything? Okay. I mean, first of all, I think the National Junior Honor Society question that we had earlier was a good one in terms of trying to get that program back into the middle school and trying to encourage, trying to get, I know from my own experience, from my kids' experience, being involved in that in middle school was a great foray into them getting involved and wanting to be involved in those programs, community service and things like that at the high school level. In terms of academically gifted students, absolutely. There are, I know we have a variety of AP programs that we offer at the high school and early college opportunities that we are constantly growing. I think we're up to 150, 160 kids that are involved in that where they're able to attend college while they're in high school and get, you know, up to even a full semester, I think, of college under their belts by the time they graduate high school. So absolutely encourage and would advocate for any of those higher education initiatives or advanced placement initiatives at our high schools.
Mr. Goslin?
Yeah, I'm going to bring it back to that National Junior Honor Society question too because it plays a role in this question. So when I was in middle school, it was South Middle at the time, you had to have an A or above and I had all As and Bs, but one class, Science Mr. Burt, 79.5. They would not round it up. It was a policy. I never would have dreamt that, sitting here tonight, I would be saying, that was the best experience I ever could have had because it taught me a lesson in life. Keep trying, keep pushing, keep working towards your goals. I don't care what everybody else is getting and I'm still friends with those A-plus folks. But you keep going. So I would love to see that program. It's a learning curve. It's a lesson whether you make it or whether you don't make it. I was one that missed it by just that slim of a margin. So I definitely would bring that into it. I've always been a supporter of gifted and talented programs. We haven't had it in our funding, in our budget. I don't know if many of you know in the audience, I'm a former member of the school committee. I go way back before the Sullivans were even in town. Sorry, Bo. But my family goes far back, deep and wide. In my closing statement, I'm going to tell you more about that. But we didn't have the funding when I was on the school committee. So they discontinued or didn't have it.
Bo, do you want to answer that? One minute?
My parents moved here from Greenfield, so that was 1964. That's about as far back as the Sullivans go, so.
Okay, Jeff?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm going to connect back to my last answer, which is, you know, one of the reasons I'm running is one of the areas where I think that we could be even better is in our offerings of advanced coursework within our school system. We are well behind the state average in terms of our offerings of advanced coursework, as well as the arts to that earlier question. And I think that those are both areas where we need to see substantial improvement going forward. I think that, I know that there's some work being done, as was referenced, to try and increase our dual enrollment offerings, for example. I think that that's a great start. I think we should continue to do that. I think in terms of non-coursework offerings, we have an excellent resource in town of Westfield State. And having greater coordination between the university and the high schools in particular to be able to offer more of a pre-college experience for high schoolers, I think would be a great opportunity to ensure that we support those town-gown relationships and also make sure that the students leave high school prepared for the college experience if they choose to go on and do that.
Thank you very much. Next question, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Caleb Buick. I am secretary for the youth commission. I'm a junior at St. Maria's High. Now, my question tonight is, with the influx of school technology, so Chromebooks and other learning instruments at school, what are you doing to improve upon those and where are you finding the resources for this?
Gabriella?
All right, so when I went to college, the things that I learned were, for computer science, were not on the newest technology. And the reason that was okay was because you need to learn techniques and you need to learn how to understand computers and use them. and you need to learn how to understand computers and use them and direct them the way that you need, you want them to go. Now, is it best to have better technology? Absolutely. Is it critical? No. So I think that the, the technology component of it, that's most important is the curriculum. So how are we challenging you with those computers? What are we asking you to do? Because those computers, they're, they're pretty, they're able to do a lot and a lot more than you have the knowledge to make them do. So there's a lot more learning you can do with that technology. As far as the budget component of it, I will have to find out when I get in, if I, if and when I get on the school committee. But I think that the people studying, like in the classroom, if they're taking computer programming, that's where we should spend the money, because the basic Chromebook does a ton of stuff you can, you can utilize.
Bo?
Technology rules the world right now, doesn't it? And I never want to say this out loud, but I'm going to tell you, because I can't come up with another phrase. One good thing, and I hesitate with good, that came out of COVID, was we made the investment in technology. We had to. There was always a goal that the superintendent, the front office and the school committee had, was getting a Chromebook in the hands of every student in the Westfield Public Schools. I'm hope, hoping St. Mary's did the same too, so I think they did. And we achieved that. Now, budget-wise, absolutely right. We had to actually take from a fund that we have and buy the rest of the Chromebooks. So everybody could learn. They had to have their own Chromebook to do schooling at home, or if they were in another building in town, where we could separate them. Another thing that came out of this was, a Chromebook is no good if you don't have access to Wi-Fi, correct? I know that one. The city got behind this initiative. There was a fundraising effort to get every student who couldn't get Wi-Fi to either get them a hotspot or wherever they could go, so they had access to Wi-Fi again to learn. So technology right now is huge, and that's only continued. We're getting to the point now, you, you know as well as I, you probably know better than I do, computers are only good for what, a day and a half? They need to be replaced. So there are, back to the, one of, a couple of questions ago, grants is one way to do that. So I think having that one-on-one or one-to-one technology, one Chromebook for one student, is hugely important, because like I said at the very beginning of this, technology rules the world right now.
Okay, thank you very much. We still have about 20 minutes left in this session, so if it's okay with you guys, and it's okay with all of you, I'd like to start another round of questioning. And let's have the next, the next question, please.
The question is, how do you plan to close the financial gap for students and create a more equitable environment for them?
Jeff?
Well, I guess there's many things you could do. I mean, you got to be creative and innovative in your district to, to close that gap that you're talking about. You're talking about funding, I guess, or funding sources. Coming back with technology, for example, we had Chromebooks, and I often watched the school committee meetings in Westfield. We had Chromebooks 10 years before Westfield had them in Northampton. Sorry, folks, I know, but we did. It's reality. Do you have the money? Or do you not have the money? Again, every district is different. Every district, you know, has its own needs. There's different sizes. Westfield's big, you know? There's a lot more students than Northampton. So another thing is, when I taught in Springfield, Milton Bradley stepped up to the plate and actually bought those computers and gave them to one of the schools for every student, just did that and probably got some kind of tax write-off. I don't know, but if you can get private companies to, to do that, that's also something to think about. I would look into that if I'm on the school committee. I certainly would, because we can't just keep relying on the budget through the revenue source. We got to look through other streams. So that's one way you could close that gap.
Jeff?
I love this question. I love budgets. I love digging into budgets. And, and part of the reason I really love it is because budgets are a reflection of an organization's values. And so the first thing that I would want to do as a school committee member is to really dig into a budget and to understand the choices that we're making. I think that there's important questions around the, the overall amount that we're able to spend, and some of that, you know, there are, like we talked about before, pressures with reducing COVID dollars. There are opportunities around continued grant money. There's, of course, partnership with the city that needs to continue to happen. But then there's also work that we can be doing to look within the school budget, to be able to understand things. I think we need to be having a more explicit alignment between our budget and our district and school level priorities, and push to make that really forward in the, in the budgeting process, so that we know what are we making our investments in, and what are the real trade-offs that we're having each year that we're needing to make the hard choices. I think we'd want to dig into things like how our actual spending compares to the assumption in the schools, in the state foundation budget. We want to look at how our per-unit funding varies school to school, and the extent to which that's a strategic choice, to your point about equity within the system. And I think we'd want to be able to look at things like our administration for support versus instructional staff spending, and see how that compares to a higher achieving school districts with similar demographic stars.
All right, thank you very much. Our final question tonight, who has that?
The question is, do you have any ideas on how to keep the bathrooms clean?
That's an important question. Gabriella?
Oh my goodness. Let's see. Yeah, that's a, that's a good one. One thing that you can do when you have a problem is bring together a few people and talk about it. What are the options? The things that I can think of off the top of my head, um, go back to the old-fashioned star system. If the bathroom's clean at lunchtime, they get a star. If the bathroom's clean at the end of the day, they get another star. And if you get enough stars, you earn free time. I don't know what you earn, but it depends on the school. And we could do some brainstorming about that, because it is important to have clean bathrooms. Yeah, so I, I think that may not be the only bathroom issue. There's vandalism as well, and people going there and hanging out. Depends, hopefully those aren't too bad. I don't, I'm not sure. But definitely bringing people together, and that's how I like to solve problems also.
Mr. Sullivan?
I got to admit, I didn't think of this question. So kudos to you. But I guess it, it does bring up an issue, and that's people doing their jobs. Bathrooms are supposed to be clean. People are in charge of that. So again, I'll go back to something that I did about 45 minutes ago with the whole leadership. If you don't think the bathroom's clean, did you tell someone? Or did you, we ask a question, I don't mean you. Well, I do, but I mean everybody. Do they know? And if, if you do, and it still doesn't get done, go get a friend. If it still doesn't get done, go get another friend. The three of you walked out, but make sure people know about it. I mean, that's, that's just one of the things that, I got to admit, the school committee doesn't do that. Okay? Most of us work. But it's obviously an important issue. It's, it goes, it goes to the whole environment of the school. It goes to cleanliness, not just the bathrooms, but hallways and classrooms and, and offices and everything. So it is, it is one of the issues that if that's a problem, it's interfering with students' education. And obviously is because you brought it up. So there's been some point in time where you thought of that, and maybe it was in the middle of a class, which we don't want you to do. We want you paying attention to, to what you're supposed to be learning. So I think it's a broader issue than, yep, I get it, dirty bathrooms, that, that is an issue. But I think it's part of the, of an issue that you guys can bring forward, to make sure that if it's the teacher or the administrator, or the custodian, whoever it is, to make sure that that gets done, because it's an issue. Obviously, it's an issue that, that you guys care about. So take the initiative.
Mike?
I, I too am not prepared for this question, but I should be, because it's a question that gets asked at my house every, every so often. So, I mean, off the top of my head, in terms of, in terms of bathroom cleanliness, and I don't know how severe the problem is, so I, I can't really speak to how dirty the bathrooms are, but off the top of my head, I would think the first conversation would be with, with faculty and with the folks that are responsible for keeping those clean. Obviously, they do a great job. They can't be in there all the time, every time a student goes into one of the lavatories. But, you know, other ideas would be, you know, hall monitors, lavatory monitors, strict adherence to bathroom passes, to Gabriella's statement earlier, you know, if people are in there hanging out and not using it for its express purpose, then that could contribute to it as well. But my immediate thought would be, if it is a, if it is a serious problem, that is a concern of a large part of the student body, clearly if it's made it to this forum, then it is, then we should work with the administration to try to figure out how we can get maybe more frequent, maybe more frequent trips by the custodial staff to the bathrooms. Or if there are specific bathrooms, maybe there's one in the back of the building that's a problem, or in a certain part of the building, maybe we shut that one down and make people use, you know, areas that are more visible, where people can see them going in and out and see how long they're in there for. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Nothing like going out on top, right? Well, that, that concludes the questions that we have. Do you want to? Yes. And we want to thank our students for asking these really wonderful and insightful questions. I think that you did a great job. And it is now time for our closing statements, and we're going to start with Jeffrey.
Good evening. I'm a former school committee member, so I don't know if many of you knew that in this audience. In, oh, in 2007, my mother had passed away. She was on the school committee, and I was appointed to the school committee unanimously by all 13 city councilors. Not one school committee member voted for that appointment, and I still had to go in there and do the best job that I could do. That is incredible, and I did it. I can't believe I still survived. But here I am, still working on things. My mother ran for mayor in 1991, the second woman ever to run for mayor in the history of the city of Westfield. I don't say that lightly. I don't say that easily, and it's very difficult for me to sit up here and say. It took me many years to talk about it. But now at 55 years old, more people want me to talk about, they want to hear that story. I come from a political family. I shied away from that for many years. Why should I? I've been in politics a long time. I've had my wins. I've had my losses. I predate before the Sullivan, way back, when a 16-year-old girl your age from high school went in front of the city council, wrote a letter to President Kennedy about saving Fort Devens. And we know the story about that. Fort Devens still exists to this day. So if you think your voice doesn't matter in democracy, that you can't make that difference, of course you can. Every one of you can do it. It's a learning curve. Keep going. And I'm so proud of you, young people, that put this together today, because no one else really stepped up. We've had some changes in the community, different newspaper owners and different people. A lot of the old-time regime is gone now. But I hope I can make a difference on school committee. I've got the knowledge, the data, all the history of the city. It's important.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gunther?
Thanks. I just want to start again with appreciation for this opportunity. Thank you again to the Youth Commission for putting this together. These were great questions. For the moderators, the AV staff, and of course, for everyone here tonight. As I hope you heard me articulate tonight, I'm committed to making sure that we provide the best education possible for all students in Westfield. As a parent, I'm invested in making sure our schools are the best they can possibly be. As a former teacher, I understand the challenges and pressures faced by teachers in the classroom each day. And working for a national education organization, I see how schools and communities all over the country are evolving to meet the needs of the world today. And finally, as an education finance professional, I have the skills to deeply understand school funding formulas and our school budget, and ensure that Westfield Public Schools is maximizing the resources we have to support our students. I'm running because I believe that the school committee can have an impact to make our schools even better, and because we should not stop until we know that the schools are the best they can possibly be for every single kid. I also believe that I have the prospective skills and experience that I can bring to the table to make a unique impact in improving our schools and supporting the school committee in its mission. I hope you'll learn more about me at guntherforwestfieldschools.com, and I hope to have your support on Election Day. Have a great night.
Thank you very much. Gabriella?
Thank you. Thank you for this Youth Commission. That was a great job with the questions. Some of them I didn't have answers to. But I would love to work with you as a group individually to help resolve any issues that you do end up having. Some of the things that we didn't discuss that I wanted to bring up are the mentorship program. I'm very glad that we have that, and I'd love to see the students that are having problems in school be able to have mentors. I think that the community involvement and parent involvement in our schools is going to really help, and I, that should be encouraged as much as possible as well. Westfield is a great place to live, and I'd like to have the schools as good as we can get them, so that our students excel. The, the special ed system, I have a lot of experience with, and that's one thing that I really believe I can make a difference with. I've had many, many IEPs send students to Pathways and other, the Life Skills Program, and seen a bunch of my kids who were both in Fort Meadow. And I think that we have a very limited budget for the needs that we do have, and that's going to take some real problem solving. And I do really feel that I understand the needs of those kids. So I would be grateful if you would vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bo?
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Diana, and everybody, the Three Musketeers, as I like to call them. These guys are at everything in Westfield, and that's why everybody can see anything in Westfield, is because of those three gentlemen back there. Nabeel, thank you for the, for the venue. So yes, I agree. Clap for them. It's not my two minutes, though. Excuse me. Why am I running? I'll tell you why I'm running, because I feel education is the most important thing that we do, not just in the city of Westfield, but in society. We educate our young kids, which in turn educates our future leaders. You've heard me talk about leadership a couple times tonight. These guys exhibited it by being here tonight. Okay? The education system in a city, I'll tie this into the Chamber of Commerce and, and business. When somebody wants to come to town to open a business, one of the first things they look at is the educational system in that city. So everybody talks about expanding the tax base? Well, one good way to do that is make sure the education system in town is the best it can be. And I know when people start talking numbers, everybody's eyes gloss over a little bit. But I want to say one thing, and I've But I want to say one thing, and I've brought it up before, and I am going to keep talking about this. The funding formula from the state of Massachusetts kills us. When I first got on the school committee five years ago, I was told, compare us to Pittsfield, compare us to Pittsfield. You want to know something? Pittsfield gets $20 million a year more than we do. Think about that for a second. Same population, pretty much the same demographics. Why? I have started the conversations with people in Boston, but that's going to be something that you're going to hear from me for the next four years, is funding for the schools of Westfield.
Thank you, Bo. Mike.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, clearly there's a lot of good things happening in our schools here in Westfield, but clearly there's always room for improvement, right? And I think that was said earlier and completely agree. Some great wins going, going through the system here over the past, just in the time that I've been here over the past year. Portrait of the Graduate was, was mentioned earlier. These are, this program is something that brings about traits for students that go above and beyond what any standardized testing can measure, prepares people for real life. I wanted to talk a little bit about question number 10, which was about initiatives, since we didn't all get a chance to respond to that. I would love to be able to continue our technology initiative. We talked a little bit about that in question number 12 as well, both in classrooms and also as a collaborative tool for use with communication between parents, students, families and faculty. Improvement of facilities, I've talked about that. If you've read any of the stuff that I've put in the paper, put online or handed out, we need to improve our facilities and make sure that we've got budget carved out, not only to be able to make capital improvements, but also to be able to maintain those improvements and not have to lay out those capital expenses every five years or 10 years and be scrambling around to try to find the funds for it. Preparing students for real life, I talked about a little bit there and through the, through the Portrait of a Graduate program and the intangibles that we need to prepare our students for. We need our students to be good people. We need them to be good students. We need them to get through school and satisfy all the state requirements, but we need them to be good people. We need them to be smart people, critical thinkers, leaders, like you guys are here. So that's why I'm here. Those are the programs that I'm trying to push through. Early voting is Saturday, the 28th, and the general election is November 7th. So I appreciate your vote if you would be so kind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we wrap up, let's have a big round of applause for all of our graduates. Right now, I would like to, I'd like to bring up Diana McLean. She is the advisor for the Youth Commission. Somebody that has done so much for our community over the years and continues to. And we're just so very happy that we can have her with the youth today and putting this whole thing together.
Okay. Well, what a great community we have that we have our candidates give up their evening for us and hear what these students have to say. We have Adam right here, who was our moderator, Joanne Pappa-Dimitriou, and our three gentlemen, Jay Peguica, Ken Stomsky. Where's Pete? Oh, Pete. And Pete calls. What that really says about a community, that they would give us this opportunity. And so this commission, as you may know, we have about 41,000 people in Westfield, and a quarter of those are 19 and under. So they represent a very big population of our community. And they, they just blow me away. We had more questions, but we've been encouraged by you all to bring them to the school committee so we can continue the dialogue. And it started, actually, this idea came about because, you know, they bring to the table all of what's going on in their world and, and what's going on, especially at the schools, what, you know, what keeps them up at night. And at one point, I think someone had said, well, that's going to be, that is going to be too much for us to take on. We'll never be able to get something like that done. And that's when we said, well, let's have a debate and we'll, you know, we will let you know what we're thinking about. But also that we're kind of on the same page. I mean, you really, you know, seem to be already, the motions are in place of some of the things that they're already thinking about. So the fact that they're seen and that you are thinking the way they are thinking is, is really great. And I'm so proud of them. I mean, just the, the things that they, these were their questions. And for them to be thinking these things, we still have room. There are applications on, on the back table. And this isn't a commission of the brightest overachievers. We happen to have them here, but we welcome anyone. Anyone who wants to make change in the world and, well, in our community. So if you would like, if you know anyone like that, we have some applications back there. And just getting on the commission gives them an education about the political process as far as, you know, going to the mayor, city council, the Personnel Action Committee, back to the city council, take their oath of office. And so it's been an education, and they, they're just so uplifting. When you see everything going on in the world and you, and you worry about our youth, then you get to listen to these kids and you, you know, they're our future. And we're so lucky that we have these kids here. So thank you all for engaging in the Youth Commission. So thank, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.